Hi, everyone, and welcome. I'm Susan Demas, the executive editor here at Lincoln Square. And joining me today is Scott R. Levy. He is a School Boards Association member and an adjunct lecturer at Harvard's Graduate School of Education. He recently wrote Why School Boards Matter: Reclaiming the Heart of American Education and Democracy. And this explores how school boards empower citizens to tackle public education's toughest challenges and rebuild trust in democracy. Thank you so much for being here today, Scott.
Susan, it's great to be with you.
Great. Well, it seems like almost in another lifetime. I've been a reporter at the local level many, many years ago. But it's an experience that I took with me because it really helped me become a much better reporter, talking to people in communities, covering those school board meetings, those city council meetings. And I'm struck by the fact that back when I used to cover school board meetings, like in the early aughts, they were usually, you know, pretty state affairs. You know, we would be, I would be covering, you know, if they were going to repave the parking lot, maybe if they were going to go out for a tax question, a millage, and sometimes that would get heated. But, you know, for the most part, you know, they weren't really well attended. You know, it was kind of a diehard people in the community that would show up. A lot of people wouldn't know what was going on with their local school boards. And then flash forward, especially after the pandemic broke out, and I was running a statewide news organization in Michigan, and suddenly, school boards were like ground zero for discontent, whether it was about health policies with masking and then vaccinations. But then it became a lot of debates about what was being taught within the classroom. There were a lot of debates over if certain books should be taught, especially books about race and sexual orientation. So I'm really interested to hear from you about what you have been seeing across the country and why you felt that it was so important to write about what was going on in school boards right now.
Well, you're absolutely right. And part of why I wrote the book was because I witnessed the same thing that you are, where historically, school boards just seemed to be relatively mundane. And you would discuss budget line items or intricate policy language, and then all of a sudden, everything, you know, started to erupt, it seemed like in 2020. And I always like to tell the story that in 2015, when I was first elected to my local school board, and I'm walking down the street and somebody stopped me. And they're like, oh, Scott, congratulations on winning the election. I'm going to watch you on TV because all the meetings are recorded and citizens can go and watch them. And I was excited because I thought, nobody watched these meetings. And sure enough, you know, he continued to say, well, yeah, I've been watching them lately because it really is helpful because I'm having trouble falling asleep. And, you know, these meetings just, you know, allow me to fall asleep really easily. And that was 2015. And then obviously during COVID, everything changed. And when I started to write the book, one of the first things I did, which was one of the most interesting things, was just to go back in time. Like, were there other periods in time where we saw this? And the answer is absolutely yes. And one of the things that I talk about is if you look at all across the country, red states, blue states, there were parents that would come to the microphone during COVID, whether it was masking or vaccinations, and talk about their concerns and talk about why they're objecting to these policies. And vaccination was one that really was, you know, widespread across the country. And if you look back to the early 1900s, when smallpox vaccines came about and were starting to proliferate in, you know, school districts across the country, you can actually look at the words that were used by parents that came to the microphone, and they were incredibly similar, almost replicable to what we heard during COVID. And so I think that this whole concept of the line between parent rights and government control, and where do you fall on that line, and what's reasonable and what's not reasonable for a district to do? There's always been that theme in American history. I do think that there are certain things that have changed, you know, more recently. And I can talk about that with you. But fundamentally, what's remained the same is that there are these, you know, difficult decisions that need to get made. And oftentimes, you know, it comes right into the school board room, and that's where it's adjudicated.
Right. It seems now that every, every race down, you know, to dog catcher, if you still have that, in your community, is rather unusual. You know, national politics have a way of seeping into everything. And we saw that in school board elections during the COVID era, starting in like 2022, '23, '24. And you would have national groups that were playing in local school board elections. And oftentimes, these, you know, positions aren't even paid. So what's, what's going on that suddenly you even have, you know, very well-funded national groups that really care what's going on in the school district that might only, you know, be in communities of a few thousand people?
For those of us that are parents, I think we can all say that regardless of what issues we care about as it relates to our kids, if we see something that we think isn't right, if we see something that may not be consistent with our values, wherever our values are, you know, we are animated about it and understandably concerned about it. And I think that, you know, it's sort of activating to some extent. And I think what politicians have realized across the board is that activated parents, again, regardless of what your politics are, means that you're an activated voter. And so I think that there's more recognition now, you know, post-2020, with all the spotlight on these school board meetings, that hmm, if you're a state politician or if you're a national politician, you know, maybe you should take note because this could be a source of support for you. It could be a source of galvanizing, you know, people that might be very active in various political races. And so this line between our national politics and our local politics certainly has blurred. And of course, you know, the internet helps that. I always like to say that, I think the internet has done two things. It's made school board meetings go viral sometimes because you can have a clip that happens in a meeting somewhere, and all of a sudden, it could have hundreds of thousands, if not sometimes even millions of hits. I saw something the other day that had 5.9 million hits, you know, quite extraordinary, from a local meeting in a local community. And then you also have the dynamic where if you're a like-minded person in, say, New York and California, and you're literally on opposite ends of the country, you can communicate with each other through, you know, social media, and you can apply the same tactics at a school board meeting. And I talk about this, you know, in the book a bit, that this happened certainly during COVID, and it's happened afterwards. And so you see the same patterns across the country, where you may not have seen that before because primarily, as you mentioned before, local news was really the source that covered school boards. And now, in so many communities, you don't even have a local newspaper, or you might have a local newspaper without the same resources that it used to have. And there's a void there. And it's been sort of taken up by social media. Having said that, even though our national politics have clearly, you know, come into the boardroom, I really do believe, and this was kind of the surprise part of doing my research, when I first set out, I said, okay, this is all about how school boards can smartly govern schools because they're sitting within the district and they know what the issues are, and they can, you know, think about the different initiatives and make sure there's the right balance. But what I really came to realize was in the age that we're in with all of our polarization and all of our divisiveness, that these, you know, board meetings are actually places that I truly believe can be helpful to our democratic process and to try to reunite us because we're actually there in person. And we're often there in person with people that think very differently than we do. And the boardroom forces everyone to be in that room, to listen, and then ultimately come to some decisions that some may like and some may not like. But there's a clear process, and it's a very personal process, that is quite different than our, you know, state and national politics. So I'm happy to talk more about that because I'm really passionate about how I think boards can maybe be a solution, even though on the surface, we see all these, you know, fights happening in boardrooms like, whoa, this is out of control. But actually, you know, a lot of it is civil discourse at its best.
Right. Well, it is a different atmosphere than, you know, what goes on in your state legislature, where, you know, if you are, if you do come to observe, you know, oftentimes, you're on, you know, a balcony looking down, so you're not like an intimate part of the process. There's no public comment, you know, like there is for your local township board or your school board. And so, you know, the best you can do is, you know, call or write to your representative and hope that they, you know, they actually see your concern as opposed to getting your three minutes before the board and saying your piece. I know that a lot of the moments that we do see, you know, whether it's in local news or that has gone national or social media, it's always the dramatic parts. It's the walkouts, it's the fight, you know, sometimes the fistfights. A couple of years ago, in Michigan, where I live, there was somebody who threw a Nazi salute, and that went all over the country. But, you know, for the most part, are most of these debates still civil? Is there a meeting of the minds that you think overall is still taking place at most of these board meetings?
Yes, so it's interesting. It's an interesting time to ask that question because there was just a piece of research that came out. And there were three researchers that did a lot of work looking at 100,000 hours of video of board meetings around the country. And they tried to figure out the answer to this question, is this conflict widespread? And how crazy is it? And they, they looked back in time, and what they found was, in a nutshell, after 2020, the level of conflict has gone up, as you would expect. But if you look at real intense conflict, the conflict that we see in those clips, the conflict that we might see on cable news, it's a, you know, small group of districts that have that intensity of conflict. And the vast majority of districts certainly have conflict. There's no question about it. And at different points in time, that might heat up, that might slow down. But it's conflict that, you know, you would deem to say is, look, is a great and healthy part of our democracy, where there are differing opinions on, you know, these matters, and it all kind of comes to a head, and people, you know, talk at the microphone. Sometimes they could be angry, but they're not threat, they're not threatening. They're not, you know, being violent. They're not, you know, they're just, they're just expressing their views. And similarly, you know, boards, as they interact with each other, you know, same thing. So I do think in the vast majority of cases, you actually want your K-12 students looking at these meetings saying, hey, you know, this is a forum where people could actually come together and have difficult discussions. And maybe we can learn something from that and then go to college. And on our college campuses, have those difficult discussions. And, and we'll leave and we'll still be neighbors and we'll still be friends. And even though we might see things really differently. I think that's what happens in most boardrooms. Obviously, there are lots of exceptions. And, you know, certainly, you know, there have been some really heated moments and some moments that cross the line into threats that are, that are, you know, that are downright scary. But I think that, you know, we could really sit back and say that the vast majority of what's happened, you know, is constructive. The other interesting thing that I stumbled upon in my book, when I was doing my research, is that there's this concept of an island district, which is a district in a state where the district politics don't, and I don't mean the district as the school, but the town politics that are part of that district don't match the state. So an example would be Austin, Texas, or some of the Long Island or upstate, you know, districts in New York that are more conservative and a liberal state. And, you know, Austin's a liberal and a more conservative state. And what the research found was that these places had an elevated level of agitation against administrators and teachers and board members. And it's not surprising because what's happened in our country, without a lot of people paying a lot of attention to it, is that many more decisions are made in state houses now than what used to be, certainly 30, 40, 50 years ago, when boards did much more than they do today. And if you have a lot of decisions in state houses, then if you live in that island district, you're going to feel like you have absolutely no ability to have any nuanced, you know, decision-making in your community for your values, and you're kind of stuck with the state values. And I think if you really fast forward and think about what that could do, is if people get too frustrated, then you have even more people moving to the state that matches their politics. And it divides us even more than we're already divided, you know, if that's possible. And I think that there's something really healthy about there being different communities that think differently in the same state. And I think that having that layer of some district autonomy over some of these decisions, it really helps with that because it gives people a little bit more of, of a, you know, of a home that they feel like might match what they're looking for, without jumping to a state that might perfectly match their political disposition.
Yeah. In covering some of these conflicts in school boards in Michigan and more intense local elections, a lot of times, it's been in communities that are kind of purplish. A lot of times, they may have been more conservative historically, but the demographics are changing, the politics are changing. And so there's been that conflict kind of baked in between people who've been there a long time and maybe people who are moving in. I'm wondering if that is a pattern that you've seen in other states and communities?
So I haven't seen research empirically on it, but I absolutely would agree that as I was looking at school board meetings around the country and just trying to get a sense of what was happening in different states, I did see a pattern of, certainly in purple communities, many issues that, you know, you can imagine coming to a head, where you had a more divided community that where it was harder to reach consensus, that would be a consensus that everybody can look at and say, oh, I feel really good about that. I feel comfortable. But rather, a decision gets made, and then some feel like they're winners and some feel like they're not winners in that regard. And, and so I think that's absolutely right. I think that the same thing happens, you know, at the state level in maybe more purple states where a lot of these decisions are getting made. But again, even in states where there's clear consensus or in a community where there's clear consensus, you're always going to have a minority of folks that just think very differently and feel, you know, very alienated. So I still think even in these purple communities where there may be more drama happening in the boardroom, that this is not all bad. Because I think we do have to recognize that some of these, you know, issues are really complicated. And, and, you know, it's, everybody puts like quick labels on things, but then when you really take a look back at what some of the implications are, then people, oh, okay. And I'll give you an example. So after, you know, the first iteration of board, you know, battles around COVID, then we had a lot of battles clearly about DEI and CRT. And if you looked at one network, you'd think that there was CRT in every school. And then you look at another network that would say that there's CRT nowhere. But at the end of the day, when you looked at all of what was happening in boardrooms about, you know, DEI, there are actually a bunch of underlying policy issues that school districts and states, to some regard, because states are so important now in all these decisions, because they often make them up at the state level. There were all these policy decisions that are with the lens of DEI. So example could be disciplinary policy. Or should I have advanced math coursework? Should I, you know, have accelerated algebra and have calculus? Or should everybody be at the same level at all times, you know, in the name of equity? Like, that was, that tore apart communities. If you have magnet schools, what should the admissions criteria be? Should they be test-based? Or should they be representative admissions criteria? And that was something that was fought in many communities. You could, you could think about, you know, issue after it, obviously, the history curriculum. That's an obvious one, about, you know, what type of history curriculum should be taught or the books in the library that people object to. And there have been book ban pushes from the right, for sure. But there have also been some book ban pushes from the left as well. And so with all of these issues, these have been adjudicated. So it's more than just the high-level words that sometimes you hear in the soundbites. But there, there are, you know, some serious policy issues that, you know, ultimately have to be decided.
Right. And obviously, you have parents that are very concerned about what kind of education that their children are getting. And, you know, the school board is the logical place for you to take those concerns to. And there have been increasing concerns about what kind of books, you know, children are supposed to be reading, especially if they are about LGBTQ people. To, you know, some degree, also, you know, the debates over critical race theory and racism. But you also do have, you have think tanks and political groups that have gotten involved in these issues too. And like you said, you know, some news networks are, you know, were running wild with stories about how DI is running amok. And, you know, other news networks were saying that, you know, this really is not an issue. How, how much of the concern over, you know, banning books in particular, do you feel like is coming organically from within communities? And how much of it is, you know, outside groups that see that there's conflict? And, you know, there's an incentive for them to drum that up?
Yeah, look, I think it's absolutely a combination of the two. There's, there's no question. I think what, we have to remember also that what happened during COVID was very unique in that parents had a lens into the classroom that they really hadn't had before because of all of the, you know, the Zoom school. And so I think it, it's put, it put a bird's eye on the classroom in sort of a different way than we've had. And I think that, that, you know, that certainly raised sort of the awareness level, oh, what is being, you know, taught and how is it being taught? And, you know, is my child being taught how to think or being taught what to think? And are there, are there elements of these, you know, curriculum matters that I object to? And, and I think that part of it was just organically in, you know, your dining room or living room as you were more involved in your kid's coursework, seeing what was going on. That was a piece of it. I think another piece of it, no doubt, are some of the groups that are out there and are national and obviously oftentimes being picked up on media. And that raises, you know, awareness levels and sometimes, you know, gets people, you know, very agitated to try to, you know, make change in their community. And, you know, we've always had groups focused on school board races and on school issues. Obviously, unions are, you know, a factor, and they always have been. We, a lot of philanthropists had always pushed really hard around school choice and have put a lot of money into certain school board elections, especially in large urban districts. And this was like well before COVID. But now you see this proliferation of clearly, you know, many groups on the political right and some groups on the political left that are more focused on this space. So I just think it's, it's just raised everybody's awareness. I think that, you know, as I wrote the book, and I'm really thinking about it from a political science perspective, sometimes you have, you know, judgment calls and decisions to be made. Obviously, there's clear, usually clear law in this country that you need to follow, and that's very important. And the courts oftentimes step into situations where they see that, you know, something's happening where somebody's being discriminated against or there's an issue that crosses a legal threshold and, and a district or state or whatever could be sued. That's one sort of check and balance on the system. But to me, the real question is on the issues that are judgment calls, like where should the decision get made? And again, if you look 50 or 100 years ago, the answer to that question was, it's almost all decisions are made at the local level. And it gave, it gave parents a voice. It gave community members a voice. It gave even teachers in that school a clear voice because everybody knew where their boardroom was, and everybody's in the same community. And as you said before, you know, you had that three minutes or five minutes or however, you know, your school district gives you to speak. And, and all this stuff came out. And now what's happened over the course of the last couple of decades is that all these, not all, but many of these decisions are being made at the state level. And this is, what's so interesting about this is we think that left and right, you know, blue and red states are worlds apart in education policy. And they often are, when you look at the issues, almost every issue. You know, you can say they're on opposite sides, but not on this issue. On the issue of where the decision can get made, across the board, you've seen red states and blue states gravitate to state decision-making. So you might see a law in Washington State be the diametric opposite of a law in Tennessee, which is the case around some of like the DEI, you know, regulation, the bans versus the mandates. You may, and sometimes you actually see like the cell phone legislation, blue and red states that are doing the same thing at the state level. They're banning cell phones across the whole state. But in, but the overwhelming theme is a state, you know, heavy-handedness when it comes to schools. And I think we all should just think about that and the implications of that. Because I don't think we necessarily want a situation where we have a state at some point saying, this book shouldn't be taught in every classroom across the state. I think that's an awful lot of power for a small group of people to have as opposed to the power being a little bit more diffuse.
Yeah, can you talk with us about how we've gotten to the point where there are so many more decisions being made at the state level? Because, right, a lot of states, you know, they have a statewide policy for sex ed, for instance. You know, it's made at the local level. And even, you know, certain things like banning CRT. So how did we get to that point?
Yeah, and somebody, and sometimes, you know, somebody will ask me, well, you know, you're, you're talking about school boards having a greater role. And I think the state needs to have a role. They need to have an accountability role, and they obviously spend a lot of money on education. The states are huge funders of education. So states need to have a role in education. But it's just a question of how micromanag-y it gets. I mean, that's, that's really the issue. And, and I think that, you know, so somebody will say, well, some boards make really stupid decisions. And so, don't you need the state? And I would retort to them, why do you think that every decision made at the state level is going to be a good decision? Because some of those decisions could be quite stupid as well. And so at least, again, at the local level, there's a little bit more of a laboratory of many more districts that you can learn from and look at. And you're not going to make a stupid decision that's going to impact, you know, if you're in the state of, you know, just picking on California because it has the largest population. That's like, what, 20% of the students in the country, you know, in one fell swoop? But to answer your question, it's really a twofold story. Part of it is that there's this gradual set of logical reasons why the state and the federal government, to extent, started to take a bigger role. And, and there are good reasons, you know, in, obviously, you know, school, many school districts, not all, but many, were not thoughtful and were not good stewards of desegregating schools. And so the courts came in, the Supreme Court came in and said, you know what? This is unconstitutional. You know, segregation is, is not permitted. And Brown versus Board of Education, that's an example of obviously, you know, a federal role in education that was, you know, incredibly important. And we see legislation happen, you know, many decades ago for students with disabilities to protect them. You know, Title I, where it pours money into states to try to equilibrate the large gap that we have between very poor communities that, you know, can't afford the same set of infrastructure for students that happens in communities that have a wealthier property tax base. So that was a reason why the federal government got more involved. Then at the state level, there were a series of lawsuits that happened that again, went to this funding issue of, wait a minute, you have one district that's funded really well. The other district doesn't have any money. And so the state needs to step in to provide some level of basic education. We were fearful that we were falling behind some of our international, you know, competition out there. And so there was this feeling that we need to increase academic standards, and so we're going to have some accountability layers. So these are all things that you can understand, were reasons why there was more, more power kind of that shifted. Then at the same time, I think that there's this little bit more sinister and problematic fact that local school districts are a large part of the economy. They are large employers. Parents care about them a great deal. So you have a lot of, you know, excited voters. And it's very difficult for politics to stay out of this. And I think that state, particularly state, but also, you know, national politics has, you know, politicians have realized, you know what? There's value to me getting more involved in this world because there could be a lot of power I could amass from doing it. So I think that, that there's been that as well. And now we fast forward to where we are today. And I can, you can't really name an area of school governance where it's certainly the state and sometimes even the federal government doesn't have a heavy hand. It could be the school calendar, it could be school finances and how they're managed. It could be curriculum. But, you know, gone are the days when we say, oh, the, you know, the states are going to set very high-level standards, and then there's going to be lots of flexibility at the local level. In many respects, you can actually find legislation that's incredibly specific around a particular slice of curriculum. And, you know, oftentimes, it's going to be because there's a, you know, political interest in, in that. And, and sometimes it may not be. But either way, it's a little bit of a strange way, in my view, of having like a thoughtful and nuanced and balanced curriculum, you know, having, you know, curriculum through legislation.
Yeah. Yeah, it's, it's interesting that, you know, and I'm sure we're not alone, like in Michigan, for a long time, you could not start your school year before Labor Day because it was a state law, you know? Even something as basic as that. And, you know, maybe it made sense in, in your school district that you wanted to start earlier. But, you know, they had decided years ago that for state tourism, it was more important. So.
Yeah, I use that example all the time. We have the same thing in New York. You have to end your school the last day of the last regents exam. You can't start in most years in September, I'm sorry, in August to get any state aid. The, a lot of the holidays are mandated. And so when you look at what a school board in New York has to do regarding the calendar, the power that they have is very limited. But there are many communities where they are deeply upset about the calendar. And, you know, for a lot of legitimate and good reasons. And there's no ability to have that nuanced approach for rural communities versus maybe more urban communities, communities where there are many, you know, dual-income households compared to not. Like, there are a lot of different, you know, factors and reasons. And if you had a little bit more flexibility, I think not only can you also get more variation to meet your community's needs, you also, I think, can get some interesting case studies. And some academics can look at it and say, well, what actually works better?
Mm-hmm. Right. I know that because there has been a focus by some national groups, like, or, you know, just even Twitter accounts like Libs of TikTok, you know, they'll post like, can you believe this book is in this library in some school district that you've never heard of in Oklahoma? And all of a sudden, it's this national story, and people are getting threats. I know that we have, there's been a lot of coverage of threats for election workers, you know, volunteers onto elected officials. How much of a problem is that, you know, for school board members at this point? Because they make decisions that upset people.
Yeah, no, that's right. And I think that, and as you said before, in most cases, not all cases, but in most cases, school board members are not paid, which makes it different than, you know, serving in, in many state legislatures where, you know, you can, you can earn a salary. Certainly at the federal level, you're earning salaries. And so they're volunteers. And I think what we've seen is an increase in just school board member turnover and in superintendent turnover. And we haven't talked about superintendents in this conversation yet. But, you know, they obviously also have a very difficult job that's become But, you know, they obviously also have a very difficult job that's become even more difficult because they are, you know, straddling a lot of different constituencies. And now the average, you know, average amount of time that a superintendent spends in their job, it's like three years. It's really come down a lot. And, and so I, I think there is an issue out there with just, you know, a lot of people saying, I would run for school board, but I'm not sure I wanna, I wanna, I wanna take the risk. Or that I'm, I'm now a school board member and I didn't realize that my clip would be in front of 2 million people. Or that I now have a big swath of my community that's, you know, incredibly upset at me for one reason or another. And look, on many of these issues, you're always going to have some segment of your community that's upset with you because rarely is a community 100% behind something. So I think for all those reasons, you know, services become harder. But I think it's become also more important because I think, again, you go back to, if there's ever a way that we can kind of cobble together some sense of unity, it is at the local level. Because at least these are people that are serving, that are also, they're on the, on the soccer sidelines or they're in the grocery store or that the church or temple or mosque or, you know, they're, they're in the community with others. And there's a little bit more of an opportunity. Everybody focuses on the public comment period and it's, it's super important. But there are many other ways that people could have influence and have conversations with school board members. You have it in the grocery store. You send an email. You are maybe on a committee or you're in your PTA. And the PTA oftentimes has a relationship with the school board. There may be school board members that go to, you know, PTA meetings on a regular basis as a liaison or all kinds of ways that, you know, that board members are connected with their community. If there's a concert, usually, you know, there may be a couple of school board members there. And so one would hope that dialogue's happening in lots of different places and we see what happens in the boardroom. We don't see what happens in all those other places, but I think a lot of good things happen in all those other places.
Yeah. At the local level, there is that opportunity to, you know, really have those face-to-face conversations. You know, you're not just yelling at somebody online who you don't know about. But, you know, if you have a concern, you do have that opportunity. You, you see these folks, you know, whether it's at a fundraiser at school or, you know, at, at your local grocery store. Um, and it seems like that's something that we've lost a lot in, in recent years. You know, especially as so much of our interactions tend to be in the virtual world. And that was exacerbated by COVID where, you know, we were all isolated for so long. Do you feel like there are ways that we can kind of rebuild more of those relationships? So we can kind of get past this difficult period of, of conflict and, um, make the local level, um, more of that model for democracy that so many of us would like to see?
I think so, because the other thing that I, I've, you know, looked at a lot recently is if you look at all the competence and satisfaction and trust statistics in, in America these days, they're all very, very bad. You could look at universities, you could look at large corporations, federal government for sure, with any branch of, of the federal government, certainly the, you know, Congress, Supreme Court. If you look at, um, the statistics on, even sometimes on, on what people think about, you know, states, it's quite divided. If you ask people, what do they think about the US education system or public education system? It's actually very negative. But if you ask people, are you satisfied with the education that your oldest child got? Which is a Gallup question that they ask, it's actually very positive. And you get, you know, roughly depending on the year and, you know, around 70, you know, percent of, of people saying, yes, I'm either completely or somewhat satisfied, which was, which is a really good measure. So I think there's something to the fact that there's a, there's a bond. And part of it, look, is that we do, many of us, not all of us, but many of us choose to move to a place because of the districts. There's a little bit of self-selection involved when you can afford to, you know, to choose. And not everybody can, but for many people, it's a factor in their decision about where to move. So I think that hopefully we can capitalize on that and say that there's a way to try to find our way to, you know, to, to look through differences. I think the biggest thing that I've learned, being a school board member after all these years, is I came into it thinking, oh, you know, I'm always thinking about what's in the best interest of the children, especially during COVID. You know, when I was board president, I said, okay, you know, we have these policies in place because we're trying to protect children. And then people would come to the microphone and they'd be so against, you know, our policies. And they would be, you know, very, very upset and expressing, um, a desire to have the policies, you know, switched. And I think what I learned through that process is, you know what, they were just trying to protect kids too. It's just that the way that they were going about doing it was different than, than my way. And I think in retrospect, as we've learned a lot more about COVID and, and public health during COVID, like there were a lot of things that we didn't know and we made a lot of mistakes in terms of policy because we didn't have all the science. And in retrospect, there probably are things that we should have done very differently. We were lucky enough in our area to have many schools open up very, very early. But once they opened up, there were all these protocols in place that some of which were really helpful. And others, you can argue with 2020 hindsight, probably didn't do much and, and may have had some negative implications. So I think that we all have to kind of take a lesson from that. Like we were, many of us are coming from a good place trying to protect our kids. And it's just that we don't always agree on how to do that. And now the trick is how can we live with each other if at the end of the day, this decision is made that's not your decision? And now you have to live in a community where you're sending your kid to a school that made a decision that you don't agree with. And, you know, that's part of democracy. We can't all have our individual schools for just our kids unless we want to homeschool, which is that, that's everybody's right and more people are doing that. But for the most part, I think we're going to have to, you know, we have to learn how to compromise. I think it's easier to learn how to compromise at this level than at, when we think about federal policy where through conspiracy theory and social media, you know, good luck trying to get to, um, you know, any sort of a meeting of the minds compared to what you could do at the local level.
Right. Right. Well, the book is Why School Boards Matter. And Scott, thank you so much for talking with us about your book and about your personal experience as a, a school board member. It's, I, I really like being able to spotlight some of these issues at the local level because, um, sometimes, uh, it, it feels like you really can't make a, a difference with all of the things that are going on at the national level. But you still can, you know, right there in your community. And, um,
Absolutely.
sharing your research and your insights.
Oh, I, it was my pleasure. And everybody that's listening, um, should get out to vote in their school board election because that's one of the, um, things that is most critiqued, which is a fair critique, is that the voter turnout is very low in some of these elections. When people are angry, they know where to find the ballot box, but you want people to come out all the time. If you're angry, go out. If you're not angry, go out. You gotta exercise your right to vote. It's super important.
Yes. And the, it, it usually is these off years where you do have your school board elections. And that means that in less than a month, many of us can go to the polls and, and
That's right.
the people that will be making a big difference in our kids' lives.
Absolutely.
Well, thank you, Scott, and thank you to all of you for joining us well.
My pleasure.